To have a more meaningful relationship. We, you know, developed this relationship with members of our community who really reflected that change in growing diversity. And we formed this network of community leaders that represented this, you know, cultural, ethnic, diverse group. And it was really an open door. I mentioned diversity, but we were also looking for youth, seniors, the LGBTQIA community. And as you can see, this, this group grew. And in 2015, they were formally reinstated as the Mayor's Inclusion Task Force. And they have been serving the city since then. And some of their goals and some of the work they've been doing has been, number one, to really be ambassadors for the different groups they serve. And you'll hear from them, you know, who they serve in terms of the ethnic or cultural communities. But they also have day jobs to be kind of the voices and the links to advise the mayor, the council, different staff, to provide information, to, you know, basically help facilitate and understand what the city does and take these issues back to their constituents and to bring the needs of their constituents back to us. And it's really important to understand that they are not one voice. Each one of them brings very unique and very, you know, special circumstances back to us. And, and I want to emphasize this is a celebration because this partnership has been so wonderful and so unique, really particular to Renton. And, and one of the most wonderful things that this group has brought is in addition to what we've learned and what we've all, you know, learned from, from each and every one of the individuals is the learning that has happened from together. So I think what everyone has, what we've acquired collectively as a group has also been really wonderful. What we did in preparation for today's meeting was we provided a set of questions. We kind of brainstormed together with Council President Perez. And we provided a set of questions, really simple, really on a, on an almost personal level, you know, to ask the task force members and, and each of your council members so that we could use today's opportunity really to get to know each other. And I know, Council, you do this with other groups and with other, you know, boards, commissions, and others that you, that you work with. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Council Member, Foreman. If, because everybody's screen is different, perhaps you can call on each member who's here. If you prefer my assistance or Ben, I don't see Benita yet, but if you prefer mine or the mayor to call upon, we can do that. So then each member of the task force will introduce themselves, the communities that they belong to, and they can just go through the questions.
Well, thank you, Preeti, for that introduction. And yeah, why don't you just go ahead and, and go down the list and invite people to introduce themselves?
Okay, wonderful. How about Monique? I start with you. If you can introduce your name, the communities you belong, your professional personal interest, how long you've been with, you know, the, the task force, and this is also when it was the Community Liaison, and what it means to you to be part of this, you know, the, anything you want to share about your journey with being with the, with the task force.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, great. So hi, everybody, task force. I miss you guys. I am Monique Taylor Swan. I live in the Cascade Community area. I am a home care provider. I am also an executive board for healthcare with 775 of SEIU. I do represent the caregivers in our community and nursing homes and, you know, home facilities. So being on the board since the beginning, since our first mayor, who started this board, decided to even make it happen, understood the values of the diversity in this community, right? And he understood by bringing us together that we can actually make a difference in our community. So I've actually been on this board since the beginning, and I'm very honored to do so. Serving the healthcare community, looking at Valley Medical closely, how is our people being served? How is our seniors being treated? You know, that, I take that personally. As I said, I'm a home care provider, but I'm also an IT, which is an individual provider. So I'm a personal provider. I've been taking care of, I've been taking care of clients since, what, 97? So before we even had a union. So I'm kind of going all the way back there, how, how much I've been in this healthcare field. So it's, it's an honor to serve my community in this area, which Cascade is doing pretty well over here. We have a lot of seniors, a lot of, um, a home community-based living facility for our seniors. You know, it's amazing how we get together over here. So the COVID right now, everybody's communicating, and I think that that's very important, that the board gets to know that too. So that's why I'm on the board.
Gosh, thanks, Monique, for your long service and for that great introduction. I could tell that you bring a whole lot to the, to the task board. So thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Monique. Council Member, Mr. Mayor, would you like me to go through the list to make it easy?
Yeah, please.
Okay, thank you. I would, I would like to add that the last time we had Monique join us, she was in the hospital as her granddaughter was being born. So that's how dedicated she is.
Yeah, congratulations.
Congratulations to Monique.
Thanks.
Raleigh, can we have you talk to us next, please?
Thank you, thank you.
And again, the questions are your name, the community you belong, your professional job, and how long you've been with us, and what, what this means to you, your journey, something special you'd like to add.
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, and the council members, and also my colleagues. I'm with the Filipino community. I'm probably late.
Can't hear you.
I'm probably late. Can you hear me? No.
Not very well.
Yeah. Make sure everybody else should be on mute, and we can try that. And then Raleigh, if you can be as close to your mic as possible.
Yeah, I, I suppose that's possible right now. I'm, I'm with the Filipino community. Unfortunately, unfortunately, we're still having a hard time with the audio.
Is there a microphone that close that you can?
Can we try by shutting off your video for a moment and see if that helps? There we go. Can you try now, Raleigh?
About now?
Yes, that's better.
About now? Can you, can everybody? Yeah, okay. I'm probably late. I'm with the Filipino community. I represent the coalition of Filipino-American organizations of Washington. This is composed of several organizations within, within the Washington state. So I lead the organization right now. I was just inducted as a president since January, but unfortunately, with all this pandemic happening, COVID-19, we never had our, our usual events that we used to, we used to have, that should event to celebrate the Philippine independence. As Preeti and other officials of the City Hall has attended our last year's event at the High Regency Dumbledore in Washington. And then we have also the annual picnic of collaboration of all these organizations and our, our community. So that's it. So I've been with the Mayor's Inclusion Task Force, as I said, since 2015. I joined the Mayor's Task Force really to help build up something from the community, from the end of the group as that, particularly for the Filipino group, going to the City Hall officials, especially debating what the needs are from our community to the mayor. Since I knew for a very fact that it started from the commission, wherein it was represented by Attorney, Antonio Coe, before the Filipino community on the commission. Group, that was, that was instituted since, I think, 1999 or 1998. Correct me if I'm wrong. Well, right now, like being here, the Mayor's Task Force, to serve, to help whatever we can build within our community and within the City of Renton. In fact, it has been going on economically. We have been stringing upward because I have seen so much improvement in the city itself, especially in the main downtown area. Even the traffic signal has changed a lot right now. We've all been continuing effort of our new mayor. He has done so many things within the past year that he has been here, aside, of course, from the time of our former mayor, the, the snow. So that's it. First of all, I'm also having my own newspaper, which I can help with the media. And at the same time, I just finished my H program, which is everybody at 3:00 PM. That's why I'm sitting right here, right now, in my studio booth, so waiting for this particular meeting. Thank you very much. And hopefully, we can sit down together after this pandemic so we can see each other. I hope that everybody will be safe and sound and healthy. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Raleigh, so much for that introduction. And thank you for participating tonight. And thank you for your commitment to the Inclusion Task Force. It's really nice to get to know you.
Thank you. Well.
Thank you. And I know I'm going a little out of turn, but I heard that Violet has to leave soon. So if I may turn to you, Violet, and we don't have your audio, but we do have your audio. I don't know if you want to?
The video was on, but it just stopped, so I don't know what happened. And I wanted to, you know, show myself, but I can't. Let me see, maybe I can do it. It says the co-host has asked you to start your video. Let me see, start. Okay, now, can you steam now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. All right. My name is Violet Iskibell. I've been with the task force since the beginning. I think that was 2014. That's what, that's when I was officially invited to join the task force. And the two reasons why I was in the task force, first of all, was because, number one, is discovery. Discovery in this sense that, that when I moved back here from three different states like New York and California and New Jersey, I moved back here in 2000, year 2000. And that time, I felt like I was a stranger, really a hundred percent stranger, because I didn't know much about the city, and I lived in downtown Renton at the time. So I said to myself, what is this city all about now? Because I left Renton, I didn't know anything more about the city. And then I found out that when I joined the task force, it's a very growing city and with, full of diversity. And there's so many high-quality program, high-quality programs and services offered by the city. So I got so attracted to those services and the opportunities. And these are the things that I would like to share with my community, which is the Filipino-American community of Renton. And at that time, I was the vice secretary and then became the vice president. And until now, I am still the secretary. So anyways, and discovery is that also is, first of all, if I, if I live in a city, I would like to know who the people are in the City Hall. Not because I want to really know who they are personally, but I want to know who is who. Like, there are so many services that I need to know about and share with my, you know, constituents and my fellow Filipinos here in Renton, like, for example, the mayor's office, the human services office, the police department, all those important services that are needed by the community. And another thing is, the diversity is very important to me because then I will be able to get to know, get connected and build relationships with all the different communities here in Renton. If I did not join the task force, I will not be able to know all of them. And because of the task force, which I would say is one of the best groups that was formed in this city, the Mayor's Inclusion Task Force. And I'm very, very proud that I am a member of the task force. And I would say that I am engaged to it. You know, when I wear the badge, you know, whenever I go someplace, especially in public gatherings, and I wear the badge, that is the sign that I am engaged with the city, like an engagement ring. I call, I call that my engagement ring with the city, the badge, because that is really very important, because it's a sign of our commitment, our participation. So, so that's one thing. And then the opportunity is that, the fact that I'm able to connect and build relationship with all the members of the, most of the stuff, the city and all the diverse communities, that to me is a very, very good learning and very, very good experience. And that is one way of really, you know, one way of saying that I really live in this community, that I am not a stranger, and that anybody here is free to live in the city, to work, to live, to play, to worship, and to die, to shop, all those things. And this is one thing that I really would be, love to share, because just living in a city and living there because you want to live there is, doesn't mean anything. But if you want to get involved, you want to volunteer, you want to participate, you want to get engaged, that is what I call really living, literally, L-I-V-I-N-G. So, and right now, I am retired, but I get involved with the census recently. I was a census ambassador. And I think that the task force got, opportunity that the task force gave me was I got involved in outreach for the senior citizens and also for the parks and recreation. So that is one thing that I'm very interested to be, to be involved more. And I would really love to be a big part of it whenever possible. And the task force would be the best opportunity for me to be able to get into these services. So, and by the way, my hobby is cooking, dancing. At my age, I can still dance, and I write poetry. So that's my passion. And I think that's about it.
Well, thank you so much, Violet. The council's honored to have you witness here tonight, and it's really nice to get to know you. And I, we want to thank you for your long service and hope you'll continue on the Inclusion Task Force. It's really nice to meet you.
I'd be so honored. I'd be so honored.
Thank you. Great. All right. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Olek, if we could have you share your passion and thank you again?
Sure. So my name is Olek Olek Vinda, and community that I represent originally, I'm from Ukraine. Or at the time when I left Ukraine, it is the former Soviet Union, so it's been a while. On the committee, I'm since the beginning. My professional and personal interest in the committee. I was so lucky in my country that I was able to get my master degree. I was working back in my country in the military factory that remodeling all this MEC aircrafts, military aircrafts. So my dream was coming. I knew that I will immigrate to the United States, so I was preparing, move forward to Boeing. Guess what? It's never happened, and my career being changed drastically. So from electronic engineering, I moved to social services. And to tell you honestly, I'm happy that it's happened. I have really joy helping. But the past 30 years, when my fellow Ukrainians or former Soviets who arrived to this country as new immigrants without any language, any knowledge, anything, I was so lucky with when I got to this country, already been spoken some English. So that's when we organized the Ukrainian Community Center of Washington, which I was one of the founders and executive director, still am executive director of that agency. And my passion is to help those who are in need. So we, at the center, we develop a number of different programs, social services, senior services, youth services. We founded the first in Washington State Ukrainian language school. So I don't want to talk about Ukrainian Center, but where I'm leading to that, we are not working just with Ukrainians or former Soviets. We expand our services to others, new arrival immigrant population, despite of nationality, language, and so on. We have great relationship with Somali community, with East African community services. We have established, and now they become, became a self-sustained Iraqi community center of Washington. So that's my passion, that's what I'd like to see. I'm happy with the city. I really enjoy the city's interest and involvement in their residence. And, you know, we never had it in our country, neither it's in Iraqi or in Somalia. So, you know, that's great to see. But on the other hand, you know, there are many challenges that people do not trust government. And that's kind, I see our agencies and people like myself who work with their refugee immigrant population to be bridges to cover the gaps between the cities, governmental organizations, you know, and even nonprofit organizations, because to many of our Ukrainian special former Soviets, they have no clue what's nonprofit is about. So they consider nonprofit as a part of the government organization. So, you know, so we just building bridges, educating service providers, educating community members, you know, helping community to become self-sufficient, productive, and involved with the city. So that's why I'm here, that's why I enjoy working with this committee and looking forward for long years ahead. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Olek, and I really appreciate your service. And I can't, I might have missed it. Did you say how long you've been on the task force?
Since the beginning.
Since the beginning. Okay, great. Well, thank you so much for that long service. It's really nice to get to know you. Council really appreciates you being here.
Thank you.
If we could go to Jennifer? Jennifer?
Hello, my name's Jennifer O'Neil. I joined the task force almost four years ago, I guess. And my role has kind of changed over those years. I had been working with Chinese Information Service Center. I speak Mandarin, and I had a lot of contacts in the Chinese community, and I was hoping to bridge, bring more of them into engagement with the local government. Had some success with that through working with the festival and getting volunteers to come and getting new performers, Chinese performers, like Summer Wong, to be involved. But then, that program ended when I was running, and I also am a special ed teacher. So then I got a job with Child Children's Institute for Learning Differences here in Renton. And found myself, you know, as a person who had a lot of multicultural experience, because I'm also a Muslim, married to an Egyptian, I also speak Arabic, I'm also part of that community. And I've always, since growing up in Atlanta in the 60s, been very much supportive of and, and, you know, kept on top of issues relating to social justice, especially discrimination of African Americans and, and other groups. And so I found myself looking around at my environment and saying, you know, we really don't have any teachers of color for our classroom teachers. We really don't have anybody of color in our administration. And we really don't have a policy for, a school-wide policy of how we teach curriculum. But we do have a quarter of our students that are students of color. So I'm working with a group of other teachers to seize this moment that we're currently in and look at anti-racism and what does it mean in schools. Can be a very difficult task, but, but that kind of morphed into that area. Sadly though, I'm going to be moving to Egypt. My husband has a job there, so I won't be able to continue on the task force pretty much after another month or so. But I will still be teaching at Child Through Distance Learning, and I will still be involved in those efforts. But I did want to say, I have had the opportunity to work with, throughout the east side of King County plus Renton, and, and all the other cities have some form of community outreach and inclusion. But they all have very different models, one from the other. But I think hands down, the Renton model is by far the best. It's very action-oriented, it's built into the business plan. And when I, one example, you know, seeing the presentation by the fire chief last time, you really see that there's been years of engagement. How can we recruit people of color? What, what barriers do we need to overcome? How are we going to overcome them? And then this committee, this task force keeps people accountable. And I, I think it's just the best model. I wish everybody would do things this way. You know, I, I really do appreciate. And I love that people bring, hey, and I've seen many departments within the city of Renton come and say, well, here we are. We're here trying to harm, you know, diversify our staff or whatever, we're trying to achieve this goal. What do you think? And people will raise their hands and, and offer advice that you couldn't get anywhere else if you're not including the people of the community. And, and, you know, say, okay, that's great, but how about this? And, and, and everybody's on the same page of wanting to achieve that goal. So I told Benita the other day, I wish I could stay on because I just like being around that. You know, I like, I like being a part of it. So, but you know, I kind of have to live here, I guess. But I will, I expect to return to the area. So, you know, who knows for the future?
Well, well, thank you so much, Jennifer. Gosh, it's nice to get to know you. We're honored by your presence here tonight. Thank you for your long service. We're sorry to hear that you're leaving, but wish you well in your next chapter. And do think about, when you do finally come back, since you said you're going to, think about coming back to Renton, and be sure you let us know when you come back to Renton.
I sure will. Well, my daughter's just married someone that lives in Federal Way, so there's a good chance I'll be very close. Not, you know, when I have grandchildren, I don't want to be far, so.
Yeah. Well, good. Well, very nice to meet you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. She's being very humble. She's worked so hard for us that, and has done an amazing job. I do want to make an announcement that if there's someone who's trying to join us, we have someone signed up as home. So just raise your hand, and Julia will make sure that she gets you in. Next, I was going to ask Deacon Ted Rodriguez to share his journey with us, please.
Of course. Hi. Hi, Randy also, and everybody there. Yes, I've been with the community, I want to say about seven, seven or eight years. And I'm very excited to be part of it and be willing to work with the community, with the Spanish community, and also with all of you. And I've been working really hard in Renton for the last 40, 40 years. And one way or another, thank you, one way or another, I've been, I've been working with the government or been meeting with past mayors and now with, with Mayor Armando and all of you. So working as a deacon is very important for me to, to get, know, to get to know the people, not only in Renton, around the Hispanic community, probably in another people, not only in Renton, uh, around the Hispanic community, probably in another parish that I own and off, I visited as a deacon. And I found out the, the needs and the relations between Renton and other cities is important, especially when those people are on the same boat, you know. So I'm very excited to be part of the, of the, this community or this group of people, different people that I, it's important for me to find out the, the culture and how much they've been working with the community. Sometimes you feel like you are the only one doing that. And when we meet together, I found out that is about sixteen or eighteen more people representing by eighteen or so nationalities. And and it's good to see people with a good heart working with the government for a better place of Renton and better place wherever we, we are. So it's important to work not only as a deacon and as owner of, in this case, Torero's Mexican Restaurant, but also I used to work for the Mexican consul and, uh, in the arm of the consul called Centro Mexicano of the State of Washington. And in that, on that area, I learned a lot how to, how to, uh, grab or how to reach some other people, not only in Renton and suburban areas of Seattle, but only on the east side of Washington. So it's important to keep ourselves thinking in Renton, but bringing ideas and and other necessary, necessary necessities of another, another towns. That like right now, we have problems with, in east of Washington, they have problem with the COVID nineteen, worse than than what we have right now. So it's important to consult them, talk to them, and if you can, help to them. So it's important, the action that the government of Renton is doing to keep us together and to keep us knowing each other is very important. So it's, uh, it's nice to be part of the city of Renton somehow with the join of this beautiful group of people. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ted, for that, that great introduction and for all you've done for this city and Inclusion Task Force and elsewhere. Um, we really appreciate your participation in this. Um, so thank you for being here with us.
Happy to do it.
Thank, thank you again very much. Um, there's not enough words to say to appreciate what you've done for the city. Um, next, if we can have Duke Tran. Duke, you have to mute yourself, please. You have to, uh, you're, you're on mute, if you can unmute, please.
Michelle?
No, Duke.
Okay. You hear me now? Oh, still. Hello? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay. Hi, my name is Duke Tran and I am a Chinese refugee from Vietnam. I was born in Vietnam, so sometimes I consider myself as Chinese, sometimes Vietnamese, so depend on. I came to this country in nineteen seventy-six as a refugee, uh, after over a year in Thailand refugee camp after escaped from Vietnam. And then my first job in this country was with CISC, Chinese Information Service Center, Samantha Jennifer, as an outreach worker for a year. And then, uh, after the funding ran out, I worked for Washington Associates of Churches in the refugee program for the other two year before I found the Vietnam Company in nineteen eighty-one, we start to a grocery store and supermarket. There one time we have three supermarkets, one in Martin Luther King, one in Seattle, Chinatown, and then the last one that we have in Renton. We opened up the, the reason for us to open in Renton because yeah, twenty oh five, I moved in Newcastle. So every day I drove by Sunset Boulevard and then I found the MT shopping mall, it's been sitting there for a long time. Then, then I see the new immigrant start to coming in and then the housing developed on Fourth Avenue. So at that point, I say, hey, you know, I pick Renton because I think with a good potential for the business. That's why I invest, you know, in several million dollar in the, in the, what used to call Highland, in the Highland Center. So I master list the whole center and change to Vietnam. And then right after the supermarket, we also invest a tea palace restaurant, it's been one time a very famous, but I think we had invested a long time. It was about twelve years ago when the economy started going downhill, so we lost so much money on that. And then about three years ago, we because the list up and I don't think that we can make it. So we just move, you know, I, when the list happened, I terminated list, we moved to Costa Street, which is right now the Vietnam. And I can see for the last, at least twelve, thirteen year, Renton really, really, really grow, you know, a particular minority up in that, uh, Fourth Avenue. So that's what I have a commitment to join and help develop the city of Renton. I was invited by the PM's mayor to join the task force. And we also run couple year in the international festival, but I think at that time it's difficult because not so many help. And now I think it's easier because we get so many help right now, especially in the task force. And so I'm one of the founder on the, uh, on the mayor, the task force. So I think Renton's, uh, will be growing and I worry about going too fast and then the cost of living going too high, you know, because there's a worry, but I think with Renton is very, very good potential, if I as the business one. So that's what I commit myself, you know, to join Renton and help to develop and then to help something in a community need any help and we always supporting. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much, Duke, for your, all your perspective and for your commitment to this task force and for your investment in Renton. Uh, I actually live in the Highlands myself and really appreciate that you brought your supermarket into the Highlands and I enjoyed the tea palace. So I appreciate all the work you've done there. Um, and I can tell that you're a vital part of the inclusive task force, so thank you for that.
Thank, thank you, Duke. And he has been continuing to help during the COVID crisis with partnering with the hospital and all others in need. So it's been immense, the, the help during this time. So thank you very much.
Yeah.
Next, if we can have Hamdi, talk to us, please.
Hello, you all hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Well, thank you for this opportunity. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, Breaty, and thank you all council, council members. Uh, in this, it has never been this way, but I am so grateful that we are seeing Renton council members being part of this, you know, get to know each other, uh, in moments, which are really very important and showing hope and also putting us closer together. Uh, I, I, I really appreciate that and I want to say thank you again to, to all of you. Um, my name is Hamdi Abdul. I'm the director for African Community Housing and Development. I have moved in two thousand five from Virginia and my first house was Renton along the, what's the, what's the name of the street? I even forgot the street, but I, I lived in that two zero zero two northeast eighteenth place, somehow close to that school, elementary school, uh, uh, at the corner of exit six. Uh, so it has been pleasure to, to live in Renton at least five to eleven years. And that is the first time that I went to visit. I think similar days, I went to, to the, to the clerk's office of Renton and all I saw was everybody was white. And I'm gonna be honest with you, I thought like, okay, this is a white city. So am I in the wrong place? Because I, I didn't even, I didn't have that mindset of community of color, white community. Where I came from, everybody's black and we never had all this color thing. Uh, so when I saw that everybody is, is, is white, I went immediately to the, I think, mayor's office. Before I went to the mayor's office, I met with the mayor somehow and I said to him, I went to the clerk's office and everybody is white. Why is that? You don't have a diversity in Renton or there's no people of color in Renton? And in fact, within those days, I think the mayor arranged, you know, something that I don't remember even the name because I don't, I didn't have that orientation, something that he invited everybody and it was kind of assessment, what do you need? What do you like to see in the Renton city? And then I took my, 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 my marker and I wrote everything that I have seen and what I need to see and it was so beautiful. From there on, there were, you know, step by step improvement, coming closer, feeling that we belong to Renton to the, to today's event, which is like, here I am with all the council members and the mayor and everybody. That's absolutely something that I really, really cherish. Um, talking a little bit about my, my work, uh, I work with African Community Housing and Development. And I, it's a new agency that was established in two thousand eighteen. Uh, but I, before I have been working with another agency, which, you know, the, the community came together again and said, said like, we don't want to think as, as, you know, we don't want to be poor forever or asking for handouts or seeking for support. So let us think about development and what does that look like, you know, for our community? And I'm not talking about Somali community, which I belong to or want to, but I'm talking about the community of color at large because I advocate for the community at the county level, at the city level, City of Seattle, at all our cities. And I have great connection with all the stuff that I know around me in, in our cities. So there is a strict communication around what we feel and what we don't feel and what we have. And there is one quote that I always put upfront, don't ask me about quality of service. No one should ask Hamdi quality standards because quality goes with money. Quality goes with time. Quality goes with people who are all interconnected and working together, like all arrows heading the same direction. But if I don't have a facility to even improve my children's education, then you ask me a few money and say, hey, I want you to be accountable and I want you to have this and this and that, but I cannot, mainly because of the environmental conditions, the poverty that, that is becoming our umbrella. It is impossible to do what all the things that we need to do and all the things that every American child has the right to have, which is education, which is health, you know, protection, which is support, which is, you know, all the things that serve equity. I was very fortunate that I am not a shy person, even though I have accent. I speak from my heart and I feel that I don't see color, except when I see discrimination, which is real. I have, I've seen, you know, discrimination without shame myself. And sometimes I don't know how to fight, but sometimes I feel like I want to take it on my back and home like a donkey myself, because even if you want to fight back in this country, you either have to be rich or you have to be very poor. So anybody in between, even if they don't know how to write, how to fight discrimination. And sometimes everybody drops the ball and says like, let it go. But if you let it go and it accumulates and you let it go and it accumulates, accumulates, then you're not contributing to the social values that we have, which is like non-discrimination, uh, supporting and also being kind to each other. Uh, I, I don't like to, to make it as a speech, but personally I have earned from the King County, the, probably the, the best award that I could think, which is Martin Luther King's Distinguished Service Award, Service Award. I have been awarded in South King, I've received in South King County Equity Award as well. I have received the recognition from councilman Congressman Adam Smith and others in different ways for the work that I do. But if I look back or if I see myself, I didn't do nothing. I didn't do much to earn any of this. That's what I believe, except that I was, I am willing to, to talk about social injustice. I'll give you one example, which is COVID and the situation with our community, uh, community of color and how COVID affected us. We have received a small amount of fifty thousand dollars from, I'm gonna give you examples. I don't, I know, I know that probably I should not, or maybe we have to balance the time for everybody, but this is my time as well. And as long as Breaty is not stopping me, I will add a little bit more, which is COVID has hit hard the community. I see every morning people with ten thousand rent, seven thousand rent, six thousand rent and all that stuff. Utility, you name it, food, you name it. All these mainly is hitting the community of color, whether they are in Renton, whether they are in Sea-Tac, whether they are in Federal Way or wherever they are. Just today, I have received from one landlord, eleven, one hundred and eleven families in Renton that are at the brink of eviction. One hundred and eleven families in Renton that are in the, you know, on the corner of being evicted as soon as the moratorium ends. And I don't know what to do. And there are others in, in every city because people know me, Mama Hamdi, they call me. But Mama Hamdi has nothing. I cannot reach entire community. But I'm not talking about Somali community, talking about community of color at large and mainly East African community. So this is just an information that I want to give because I want to take advantage of the presence of the council members and those who make decisions and the mayor and all of you who I feel like you are in the position of a kind of leadership for this community. I truly appreciate the time. I speak few languages. I speak Arabic, I speak Italian. I used to speak all Russian, but I forgot my Russian, except Kakdila. You will. And there is so much to talk, to talk about, but I just want to stop there and say, it is wonderful to meet with all of you. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Hamdi. Those are powerful thoughts, important thoughts. I can tell you've been a major force in this area and I commend you for all your work. Um, I really appreciate it. Um, I, I was on council back when you first met with the mayor. Probably, I guess, maybe Jesse Tanner, that I think might have been mayor back when you approached the mayor about the diversity in Renton and. As you say, we, we have been working it. I'm really excited by the momentum that we're gathering now. And it's people like you that have really helped us get there. So thank you for that. Thank you for being part of our task force. The council really is honored by you being here tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank, thank you, Hamdi. And you've really helped us push the needle when it comes to our efforts with our tenants. And, you know, we, we take this very seriously. I, I just wanted to ask a question. Dr. McCarthy, I was going to come to you after the task force members and if that's okay with your timeframe.
Oh, that'll work well, Preeti.
Okay, thank you. So next, we will go to Caleb, Caleb Mayberry.
Yeah, thanks, Preeti. My name's Caleb Mayberry. I'm a pastor at Renton Community Church. And I've been part of the task force for about two years. Our church formerly was named Harambe Church, so some of you may have heard it by that name. But we've been pretty involved in the community, both in terms of serving homeless, the Reach Shelter, the Night Shelter Center of Hope, met at our building for a few years, seven nights a week for families and children. And we've also been pretty involved in, in youth outreach, providing after-school program for primarily Renton high school students, since we're just a block away from, from the school. Kind of my passion, professional and personal, as it relates to the task force. There's a verse in the Bible, in Proverbs thirty-one that says this, "Speak up for those who have no voice, for the justice of all who are dispossessed. Speak up, judge righteously, and defend the cause of the oppressed and needy." And that verse is, is meaningful to me, especially as it relates to the church and seeing how the church can be a blessing to the city. And so my perspective and, and being part of the task force is to, to listen and to see where the needs are and to see how I and the church can be a part of the solution in our community. And I've appreciated, just in the couple of years being on the task force, seeing all of the various perspectives at the table and seeing the power in sharing information, hearing what's going on in another community can often shed light on things that are happening in our community. And so I think that's the power of it, is shared information to help really bring about solutions for those who are oppressed, for those who are needy, for those whose voices are hurt.
Well, thank you very much, Caleb. It's really nice to, to hear from you tonight and to have you with us. And thank you for your commitment to the task force. Really appreciate it. And to the city of Renton.
Thank you, Caleb. Again, Caleb's been with us and prior to Caleb, John Prince. And so they've been with us since the very beginning. And the difference they've made to our city has been just phenomenal with Harambe and the difference to our youth. It's, it's touching, you know, times in the evening and it's just amazing. It, it really touches your heart. Next, if we can go down to Dr. Smith, please. Dr. Linda Smith, and I don't see your video, Dr. Smith.
Can you see me now?
For a moment and then.
Not sure who I'm not.
Wait, we can hear you.
But you can hear me, so.
Yes.
That's, that's, that's what's important. So I'm afraid to hit this button, this saying something. If I start my video, it may cut me off. Should I try?
Yeah, give it a try. I think it'll work.
All right, there I am. Here I am. Well, good evening. Of course, I'm Linda Smith and I've been in the city of Renton for a few years. And I am the past and executive director of Sky Urban Empowerment Transformation Center in Renton. I'm involved with the RAB, Renton African American Pastors Group, a co-chairperson with the chief of the police department. I am with the Renton King County Alliance for Justice. Some work that started at the beginning of the year to work on issues of a wider scope of identifying injustices and working to eradicate those injustices. I was founder of the Vision of Hope Project, that we work with the city of Renton and along with my colleague Pastor Casey Khan. I was a founding board member of the Marjorie Williams Pan Center up in the Highlands. That's, was part of that for over twenty-some years. My professional interest, I'm a professional leadership development and, and coach and consultant. I've done work with Seattle School of Theology and Ministry and do work with Mary's Place on racial, ethnic injustice. So I've been with the task force for about five years. And what it means to be a member of the task force to me is really to continue to be a voice for the community and, and work to eradicate social injustice and unite us as a community as one. Dr. King reminded us that we're all caught in, in a, in a network of inescapable mutality tied in a single garment of destiny. Whatever affects one, affects all indirectly. So I believe our work as a task force keeps us connected to that destiny of inclusion. At the core of our work are the values that we operate out of and how those values intersect for the common good of humanity. As a black person, and I like to be identified as a black person, not as a person of color, I believe that when the mayor contacted me to join with the Renton, with the Police Department, it elevated the, the fact that black lives did really matter here in the city of Renton. And along with that task force, I believe it keeps our government and our community aware and accountable of the diverse nature of those in our city. So I'm gonna just sort of make this quick, but I've seen how our community have come together during COVID nineteen. I, you know, I just don't believe there's anybody in Renton that have gone hungry. You know, I, I've seen just a mass amount of food. I've seen, you know, from our city council members out there serving people. If someone went without food, it is because they didn't ask. And I, to me, that's the amazing work of, of inclusion. And I believe I, I mean, I've seen something about inclusion task force members making that network. And that is just something I don't think would have happened if we hadn't had the inclusion task force. I've never, never seen that. And then I think our recent ordinance to instruct racism in the clear Renton, an anti-racism example of progress that, that we've made and work to continue to bring about equity and inequality, I believe is the foundation of the work that we're doing. So I, I'm looking forward to the, to the next part of the journey, because I think we've built these relationships. And now, you know, we go out and we dive deep, because we have to do this together. We can't be this group or that group. We are all tied together in this, this destiny of greatness and all working together. So that's what makes me excited about the work of the inclusion task force. So thank you.
Thank you, Linda, for your always inspiring words and so meaningful. And your contributions are so immense. We're so glad to have you as part of this task force and as part of our city, as such an important leader. So thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Dr. Smith. You are an inspiration for all of us and a great leader in our city. And thank you for everything you've done, especially with RAB. Next, we have Vasuda. Vasuda, we also don't see your video.
Now we do. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Preeti. Hi. My name is Dr. Vasuda Sharma. I am a physical therapy and rehabilitation expert. I belong to the East Indian community in the Renton Highlands area. I have lived here for twelve years. I'm a first generation and I immigrated in the US fifteen years ago from New Delhi, India. Professionally, I'm expert on senior care and management of chronic conditions for elderly. I am a passionate freelance writer for social issues and my articles have been published in various newspapers and media outlets. I'm also an upcoming author for my book, Why She Must Lead, where I examine the leadership gap for women of color and also women from diverse backgrounds. So it will be released soon on Kindle and published in New York. I also ran in a non-topic called Voice of Planet in Renton. The mission is to provide bridge between communities and cities for vital programs and issues. So this year, our focus has been on census promotional activities in Renton. We have participated in food drives, organizing and managing art contests and distribution of masks, groceries to underprivileged population. I've also provided Hindi language presentation for City of Sense, City of Renton Census video. So you can see me there and share the video, please. The, I have been on task force for about an year, so I am fairly recent to task force. But I'm not new to inclusion. I have participated in various city programs in the past as well. For me to be a task force member is about forming bridges, creating allies and connecting with leaders in our community and presentation of the voices that need to be heard. It is to bring information from the city to the people where it is most needed. My recent experience was assisting in distribution of food at the Santa Fe Food Drive to encourage the census participation in the community. And it was really heartening to know how we all got together as a family and joined hands, found creative ways to do the community outreach and census message in this challenging time of COVID. So it was an example how we all can wear different hats, but work towards the common goal of inclusion. I'm proud to say that Renton has been meticulous working to practice inclusion through internal practices, citywide initiatives, joining hands with community partners. Our city has tremendous growth. I've lived here for twelve years and I have seen the change in the city demographics over the past few years. But I really want to keep our efforts continued, combine our efforts to fight any racism, inequities, and to end the disparity. I want to join hands with the diverse representation in the task force, the council and everybody who is passionate, equally passionate about inclusion and move our communities forward. It's really an honor to be here and to introduce myself. Thank you again.
Well, thank you, Vasuda, for, for being here with us tonight and for your work on the task force and, and for all your work in the city and your extracurricular work in the city. And we wish you well with your book. That's exciting. So what a, what a wonderful addition to this, this group you are. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much, Vasuda. We really appreciate your participation. Next, I will ask Rupi to speak to us.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name's Rupi. Good evening. Thank you for having us all join you. Sorry, my kids are in the background, so it's a little distracting. I'm a mom of two kids. We've lived in Renton for almost sixteen, seventeen years ago in the Highlands area. And a few people brought it up. It's amazing how much the vote, how much changed. But Renton still is pretty amazing at how diverse it is. And then I've been part of the inclusion task force, I think about three years ago. I ran into Preeti at the multicultural festival that I volunteered to help carry with. And that's how I even found out about the inclusion task force and then I joined. And so I worked at the multicultural festival for the last three, three years. This would have, would have been a pretty cool year, because we're gonna join with the River Day. But unfortunately, maybe we'll do it next year. I worked with the Red Park and Recreation Hall last year and then I did the census, volunteering with the census quite a bit. And the kids and I got to actually do a video that's been airing on King Five, so we keep getting messages from people that, you know, who are famous now too. Renton's a pretty cool city. We love it here. And then I'm really grateful for the inclusion task force. I'm not as, in NGOs right now. I work for, like, They Take is a foundation out of Kent. We volunteer with that, because the kids can do it. And then also a foundation that is in federal way. So I'm kind of spread out all over the city. And I'm just grateful to be a part of such a pretty cool group of people who do so much good work around the community. So thank you so much.
Yeah, Rupi, thank you. It's really nice to hear from you and get to know you a little bit tonight. And I gotta commend Preeti for her recruiting efforts. She's always.
She's pretty amazing.
Yeah, people that can, that can help us out. So it sounds like you're involved in a whole lot of ways and we really appreciate it. Thank you for, for that.
Thank you. And Rupi's always usually there with Balwant, who's also from the Sikh community. But oftentimes, Balwant is all over the world helping people in need. So we're sorry that he's not with us and with today, so.
Balwant's also gotten me involved in the They Take Foundation and that's out of Kent. So him and I have gone to a lot of hospitals, retirement homes, lots of grocery bags that we just gave out at this corners of streets in Seattle over the last couple of months. So he's been pretty busy and he's been trying to take me everywhere he can go. Thanks. Thank you.
Next, I wanted to invite Allison Chelsea. And I wanted to say a couple of things. In the true spirit of Renton's partnerships, the inclusion task force also has partnerships with the Renton School District and Renton Technical College. And we usually have Linda Host from the school district and Dr. Kevin McCarthy, who's here today and will talk afterwards. And Allison is actually a, is from the school and is one of our school participants in the task force. And this has brought a whole new dimension as we have our youth volunteers and our youth members. And so I'll leave it to Allison to talk to us about her role and some of the other youth who often join us, because it's really brought a fantastic dimension of bringing youth and the multicultural and, you know, inclusion and equity from a youth perspective to the mayor's inclusion task force. So Allison, looking forward to hearing from you.
Hi, yes, my name is Allison Chelsea and I'm gonna be a senior at Hazen High School this year. I've only been on the task force for a few months, but it means a lot to me to be part of it, because, you know, the group is working towards good things by being dedicated to improving the city in a way that will help people or make them feel more comfortable in our city. So I really do support everything it stands for. And I was passed on by my friend Ben, who just graduated to be a.
Thank you, Allison. Really appreciate your stepping up. It's nice to get to know you. I appreciate your work on the committee.
Thank you.
And I, I, I wanna make sure I didn't accidentally cut you off. I, I wasn't sure if you wanted to say anything further or.
Um, I was done, but the sound cut out for a second, so I wasn't sure if I missed anything you said after, but I am done speaking.
Okay, yeah, I, I, the sound stopped for me too for a moment. I wanted to make sure I didn't cut you off. I, we really appreciate it. And Preeti's right, having youth input is really valuable for us. It's, it's, you perform a great role and it's wonderful to have your voice on this inclusive task force. So thank you for stepping up for that.
Thank you.
And next, I wanted to introduce Dr. Kevin McCarthy. He's been, he representing RTC, Renton Technical College. He's been, he representing RTC, Renton Technical College, has been a partner with us and with the task force again, you know, from the very beginning. And the role that we've played working with our community partners has been incredible. Specifically, as we've made major changes in terms of some of our great policies, we've worked together with the Renton Technical College, with our, you know, our hiring and our workforce fairs and its employment fairs. And it's just been incredible. We couldn't have done it without these community partnerships. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Kevin McCarthy.
Thank you, Preeti. And if I get drowned out, the roofers have managed to find their way right over my head at this time. But hopefully the nailing will take a break. So I really appreciate this. I'm listening to everyone's past. It's great to hear kind of the histories of people and their involvement in the community and on the task force. And I'm clearly the new person on the block in many ways. I only moved to Washington ten years ago and became a member of the Renton community by being president of the college for the last five years, though I live outside of it. And, you know, I think it's really important for us because as you've all mentioned, the Renton community or communities have been evolving at a real rapid clip. And the college represents those communities. We have students across the spectrum. We're the second most diverse student body in the state system. About seventy percent students of color and many immigrants and refugees. And it's just a great vibrant college because of that. And we've become the most diverse employee base in the system as well, with over forty percent of our employees are people of color. And I never wanted someone to come onto campus and feel like Hamdi did, going into the clerk's office and saying, is everyone white here when our community is not? And I think it makes for a special education when all the communities can come together. You know, I think Preeti kind of started off saying that much of the Mayor's Inclusion Task Force was meant is very intentional, to make sure that the city was connected to its communities as it grew. And I'd say that's the same thing at RTC, you know, in that intentionally we want to be an educational provider that serves the community and reflects the community. And my particular interest on being on the task force is to keep learning more and more about the different communities we serve. And those on the committee will know that my attendance is not the best. I'm sometimes drawn to other things, but I always learn and I look forward to continue to learn about how we all might work together. There go the nails. So thank you all. I appreciate being on the task force and it's an honor to be able to meet with the council members this evening.
Kevin, thank you for sharing your perspectives and for being a member of our task force. You are a really vital link for that, between the college and the city. And I just really appreciate your participation and continue to work and they continue to work for the college and our community.
Thank you so much, Dr. McCarthy. It's been really amazing to have this partnership and to see how much we've accomplished together and the results of what we've accomplished together. Because we have reports to see that we're really making a difference and moving the needle. According to my tracking, I have, I think, had most of, for all the task force members, introduced themselves. If someone has joined after I have, and if I've missed you, can you please raise your hand? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone that I've missed in terms of the task force members. So with that, Council Vice President Corman, we should move to the council members. Would you like to lead that introduction session?
Okay, sure. Yeah, happy to. Thank you, Preeti. Yeah, so my name's Randy Corman. I've been on the Renton City Council. I'm in my twenty-seventh year, actually, right now. And it's been a very, very enjoyable experience. Obviously, I wouldn't have done it this long if I didn't enjoy it. It's also been a great learning experience for me and for my family. So I live in Renton Highlands. I raised five children here at this house. And now I have five grandchildren. And the five grandchildren all live in the city of Renton. So we're very invested in the city. I did a long career at Boeing, retired a couple of years ago from the Boeing Company. Well, one of my first observations, when I moved here at age twenty-two, I was hired by Boeing. And the engineering workforce at that time was already fairly diverse. We had, you know, we had engineers that were kind of coming from all over the world, working at Boeing. But I too noticed that that wasn't really reflected that much in the population of Renton. There was less diversity in our city overall, I think, than there was in the engineering workforce at that time at the Boeing Company. But I've just celebrated the increased diversity in our community. I had the opportunity with the Boeing Company to actually travel over many parts of the world with the different work I did, certifying airplanes and working with suppliers from all over the world. Came to really enjoy meeting people from everywhere and have been delighted with the change in the demographics within our city limits. And I've worked hard to try and get our employment to sort of track that as best we can as people retire. But overall, I'm just very, very thrilled to be here tonight where we are. I'm very appreciative at this time that we have focused on having diversity as part of our business plan and then really making it, you know, more inclusive and improving the language and improving the meaning and making sure department heads are working all aspects of diversity over the years. And I can tell our city is a much richer, vital, better place for it. There's a lot of work to be done. But for me, it's exciting work and our future's brighter than today. You know, we've got a lot to look forward to. So thank you. I appreciate having a chance to introduce myself.
With that, maybe just, should we go to, maybe Ed Prince might be next in the seniority list, I guess?
I actually am, Randy. That's amazing to me. Ed Prince, I've been on the city council. This is my eighth year. I was elected in 2012. I've lived in Renton sixteen years. Live on Benson Hill with my two kids. Been active in the community before I was on the city council. I was on the planning commission, served as chair of the planning commission. But I grew up in Seattle, so I spent time coming to Renton and have really noticed how much the city of Renton has changed, how much it's grown, how diverse the city of Renton has become as opposed to what it was like when I was growing up. So I am so glad that we got to spend time with you all this evening, got to hear your perspectives, and looking forward to doing more work with you guys. And I think Randy, I think since Ruth's not here, I think next in seniority would be Ryan.
Ryan, yeah. Which is amazing for me to hear that, but yes. I'm Ryan McGruvin. I've been on council now for, this is my fifth year, so just starting my second term. We moved to Renton because we did see such a wonderful community. So I want to thank you all for the work you all do as an Inclusion Task Force to make sure that we have that strong sense of community and belonging for everyone in the community. And I thank you especially for taking on the charge of the work of equity that's been ongoing right now, ongoing for a while, but especially in the climate right now and the work I know that lies ahead on that. So for being our sounding board on issues like that, it's really, really invaluable. About me a little bit more, I work professionally for the University of Washington, Boffle. I do government relations for them. So I'm up and down on the 405 naturally. That means I'm pretty interested in issues like transportation and housing policies as a result of that. And then I live in the Cascade neighborhood with my wife, Stephanie, who's actually on the Renton School Board and works at Renton Technical College. And our two dollars, Molly and Lena. Molly would have been starting, well, she's still doing first grade this year at Cascade Elementary. It's just me remote learning, so that is me. And so I will pass the baton off.
Maybe to Valerie, right? I have to think about this. We had three council members join within about three weeks of one another, I think.
Yes. Hi, I'm council member Valerie O'Halloran. This is my first term. I've lived in the Highlands for about twenty-five years. I was a child in an Air Force family. And so I was born in Germany and I lived in Turkey and Japan. My family relocated to the States when I was ten. And when we did relocate to the States, we landed in the San Francisco Bay Area. And so moving to Washington, when I first moved to Washington, I was in Kirkland. And I have to tell you, at that time, I looked around and I said, where are the rest of the people? And when I met my husband and moved to, my to-be-husband and moved to Renton, I thought, ah, here are the rest of the people. And I feel very, very comfortable here. And I just want to make one comment. On the campaign trail last year, I had an opportunity to speak at a Hazen High School Political Science class for seniors. And I had everybody look around the room at each other. And those students, it was just amazing. We all, we all looked at each other and said, wow, we are the world. We are the world in this one classroom, in one high school in Renton. It was an amazing, just phenomenal. I still get goosebumps from that experience. So thank you very much for all of your time and commitment and really, really appreciate helping move the needle and looking forward to working with you in the future. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Valerie. Kim Khan?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for being here and those who are watching and Preeti for helping coordinate this. Very much excited and very much prideful of our Mayor's Inclusion Task Force. Just a little bit about myself. Born in Vietnam after the Vietnam War and being a refugee in the Philippines Refugee Camp, through the Amor Asians program. And pretty much, once we got the lottery ticket, meaning a sponsorship, thanks to the Lutheran Church, after seven months of our lives in Limbo, we resettled in Ballard and slowly moved our way down south and been living in Renton since then. And so very much appreciative and learning the systems, our government, and how immigrant refugees fear the government and understanding that systems in Vietnam, in the Philippines Refugee Camp, and the system in the United States do not work for all of our peoples. And as part of my upbringing, really being a part of the K through twelve JD in the United States, I understand to reflect thoughtfully of different people's experiences in our family. You know, I'm Vietnamese, my husband is South Asian. We're pretty much world travelers and understand the different environments that people have to try to survive, not just to thrive. And so the experience in the refugee camp, just a little bit, is that, you know, waiting in long lines with two and a half pounds of food, it's different than the experience of waiting in long lines at the food banks in Renton or Seattle. But very much grateful for the opportunity. And as, you know, US citizens, as Americans, our family is very, you know, grateful and we love to pay forward for what we have. And joining the Mayor's Inclusion Task Force, actually, thanks to Mayor Dennis Law and understanding that our population, not just the Vietnamese or APIs, but our growing seniors population, our age population. For me, coming from the whole eastern culture, intergenerational collectivism in our family, how we treat our seniors, that's really much dear to my heart. And being a part of the Mayor's Inclusion Task Force, I see there's value. We're families here and I think that when we understand each other and build the trust and the relationship, it's important. But just like with any family, we do need to improve on our relationships, on programmings. Because including means more than just having a seat at the table, understanding perspectives. And oftentimes, the perspectives can be uncomfortable, like any structural racism. Really having the thoughtful dialogue to look at systems of how it was built in that we can understand because of systems, our experiences are different, our impacts are different. I very much am in supportive and want to work on issues of seniors, working class, youth, veterans, immigrant refugees, those excluded because of the immigration status and all the many that have been marginalized from our systems. And I'm looking forward to continue with the Mayor's Inclusion Task Force as well as the council. I think I'm one of the three designated council members to help uplift the voices in the Mayor's Inclusion Task Force. So thank you.
Thank you, Kim Khan. Angelina?
I'm gonna keep this very short because I believe everybody's stories here are far more interesting than mine. And it has been such a tremendous evening to get to meet everybody here on the task force. Some of, you know, familiar with, and some of you, this is my first time getting to hear your incredible stories. So thank you. This has been really, I just couldn't tell you how grateful I am for that. And I am, Randy, if you have been doing this twenty-seven weeks, twenty-seven years, I haven't been doing it twenty-seven weeks. So I was appointed to the Renton City Council in February. And shortly thereafter, we went into this virtual environment. So I very much feel like I am still climbing a very steep learning curve. And that is what this is about tonight, as far as I'm concerned, is all of us learning together and seeing what those next steps for our community feel like. And thank you very much, Councilmember Vaughn, for outlining a lot of those tremendous priorities. I think that many of, not all of us, share them. So who am I? I am a librarian, believe it or not. Twenty-four years working for the King County Library System. I'm a regional manager in what they call the West Region, which is the Burien, Sea Tak, Sequilla, and White Center communities. I manage those libraries. And I, so I am the fourth generation of my family to live in the city of Renton. I live in the Renton Hill community, in a house two blocks from where my grandmother was born. My husband, my husband and my daughter, who attends St. Anthony's School. Hello, Deacon Ted. Thank you so much. Good to see you. And, you know, as I said, I'm here to learn and here to hope that we can build a better thing together. I believe that we're really on the cusp of some changes for this city and for the way that we look at anti-racism and the way that we evaluate our priorities. And I'm just grateful to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Angelina. I think, if Armando's still with us, and I think he is, I'd like to ask Armando to reintroduce himself. I think everybody knows him.
Hi there. How is it planning on talking here?
Put you on the spot.
Everybody on the Inclusion Task Force knows who I am, but I will, I'll give my spiel anyway. And so I'm a proud graduate of Renton High School. I grew up here in Renton. My father was a Renton police officer for a little over twenty-five years. So after high school, I opened a business in downtown Renton, an Italian restaurant, little tiny diner, square foot restaurant. And we operated that for close to thirty years. And then we opened up a steakhouse called the Melrose Grill, which is in downtown Renton. And we still own and operate that. And I actually got into politics or, you know, decided to run for office, I guess is the better way to say it. As an operator... as an opportunity to give back to the community. I think Renton is an amazing community for a lot of reasons. And as a small business owner, the community supported me for years through thick and thin. And, you know, when a couple of previous council members contacted me and asked me to run for what would be a vacant seat, I felt like the timing was right and it was really a good opportunity to get back to the community. So, once again, running for mayor last year, or I guess it was last year, you know, it was a very interesting decision. I think there was a lot of people that were, you know, three very qualified candidates from the council that could have been there. And I feel, some days I feel blessed for the opportunity to appear. Sometimes I think, what did I get myself into? It's just the craziest, craziest time to be running a city. The one thing I will say is that makes it really special, and I try and tell many people as possible this, that the city of Renton really is blessed with some amazing individuals that work at the city. Our department heads really care about the community. They do an amazing job. And we could not be more fortunate. And I think the previous mayor, Mayor Law, really started this idea of community service. And I think some of the ideas that he brought forth, you know, the Mayor's Inclusion Task Force, was really forward-thinking. And, you know, I got to give him benefit for it. And so taking over for him this year, I'm really remiss that we are not able to meet in person because this honestly was one of the groups that I felt like I wanted to be really involved with and helped take this group to the next level. And I think that we can still do it. It's just going to take a little bit longer. And we've got, you know, Preety and Benita. Other cities are contacting us to try and borrow the two of them, to try and copy what we do here. And now, what we do here is not, everything's not perfect, but we're getting a lot of things right and we definitely have our hearts set in the right place. And we're headed in the right direction, let's put it that way. So I think that's my spiel for an off-the-cuff two minutes. So I really want to thank you all for being willing to continue to do this work. I think that it really is one of the things that make Renton unique. It's the people in Renton and it's individuals like you. And one of the things that really gives me great hope for Renton's future is the fact that we are able to have such a successful campaign for the census. You know, and this group has a lot to do with that. And, you know, the fact that we are getting to the point where we're starting to gain or earn some of the trust of the community members that maybe wouldn't have trusted us in the past or we didn't have the connection to even build those bonds in the past, is kind of a good sign. It's a good sign that we're heading in the right direction. So with that, back to the council president, Corman. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Armando. Really appreciate it. And I think I'm going to ask Preety and Benita how they'd like to use the balance of the time. We've got the council meeting in about 20 minutes. Do you want to cover any more tonight?
I was just going to request, if I may, we didn't have Benita. If she could have you have her introduce herself.
Of course. Yeah, my oversight. Yeah, I'm sorry about that, Benita. Please, go ahead.
Oh, well, thank you. Thank you. You know, it's just, it's really been my honor to serve my community. I work as a consultant. I've had my own practice for going on over 20 years now, specializing in social justice, racial equity, and organizational development. And when I was hired in Renton, it was the first, although I've lived in Renton for about 30 years, it was the first time I'd ever worked in my hometown. And that's been important to me. I have five children, two birth children, two stepchildren, and a daughter through mutual adoption. She lost her mother at a very early age, and so she adopted us and we adopted her. And although all three of my sons live in Atlanta, both of my daughters and all of my grandchildren, all five of them, live in Renton. And so that's very important to me. I, the only thing that I would say is that I'm just humbled by how much I have learned from each and every member of the Mayor's Inclusion Task Force. Their lived experiences, their wisdom in total is phenomenal and so different, so diverse. And every single member has strengths that even have yet to be surfaced. So it's been an honor to provide staffing support to this group, to learn from them, and most of all, to learn about my city. You know, I've learned more in the four-plus years that I've been working as a consultant to the city than I learned in the previous 26 as a resident. And so, you know, one of the conversations that came up in one of the last task force meetings is, you know, how do we, there's so much information and so much that residents could benefit from in terms of services and support from the city. How do we really begin to fine-tune that in ways where the knowledge becomes wider? And I subscribe to that. So, you know, Vice President, thank you for the opportunity. It's my honor to support you all and the excitement. Learning is what keeps me getting up every day.
Wow, thank you so much, Benita. Preety, I don't know if we gave you enough time to give us, to tell us a little bit about your background.
Oh, well, thank you. Well, I was born in India and I have, I actually came from a generation in India where I'm older than Wasuda and Manka and some of the others. So my destiny was probably to get an arranged marriage and have kids. And so I broke a lot of things that were destined for me. I came here, I studied, and even there I broke traditions. I didn't go into computer science. I went into government and public service and the environment, in fact. And for me, the work I've done with social justice, race, inclusion, and equity has actually been stuff I've done for a long time. Worked with the city of Seattle for many years. And my very first efforts with inclusion and equity was under Mayor Norm Rice. Before he launched, before the city launched the Race and Social Justice Initiative, I worked with Seattle, in fact, before it was the Public Utilities, the Seattle Water Department. There was a very horrible incident of discrimination. A person in the field operations department had a noose in front of their locker. So I worked to set up, at that time, a diversity initiative for the mayor there. And some of the people that I've worked with, they are the ones who set up the Government Alliance for Racial Equity, Julie Nelson, you know, and folks like that. So my history in this field goes back a long time. But when I came to Renton and, you know, we started working on this, it was when, you know, at that time, Chief Peterson, Mark Peterson, who became our fire chief, was actually a public information officer. And we had a horrendous Hanukkah Day storm. Our community was in cold and, you know, people were bringing their carbon monoxide, bringing their barbecue grill inside and we had carbon monoxide issues. So we realized we needed to do something to do a better job reaching out to our community. And that's how this group was formed in the very beginning in 2007. So, but above myself, I guess, I really find, and I think about Renton as my home, the people here, because I think it's people who make home. And, you know, the task force is really my family. I feel so connected with everybody here. And I've seen the city grow and I just feel so connected. I have a son. He's in Chicago. He's grown. That bird has flown. And I kind of feel, you know, this family has seen him grow over the years. I do have my other family here in the greater Seattle area. But I just feel connected and I feel the city really is a city with a heart. Things happen. You know, we come to you with ideas as staff and you look at it and you make it happen. And I think that's what you were hearing from each of the members here today, saying, we come to you. This is what our community needs and you listen and you make it happen. I think we've got that incredible leadership, that nimbleness, and you don't see it in other places. So we really appreciate that. And, you know, even during these hard times of COVID, that, you know, it's been, it's been possible. It's been hard, but it's been possible. So I really appreciate that.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much, Preety. Was there any other, any other items that we should do tonight, Preety, or can we?
I don't have an open question for the task force members or, you know, any, where would you like us to go? Or any just general thoughts to ponder on our next steps and next journey? Last week, we took a big step with the business plan and that's certainly given us, as, you know, collectively as a group, a charge to, you know, take some strong steps forward. The task force very strongly endorsed and supported the direction, but, you know.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think since time is short, I know we could, we probably, everybody would probably like to talk with everybody. But I think I would like to just say on behalf of the council, how important, and the mayor, how important this, the Inclusion Task Force is to us. You know, it's been important every year. We're building on work that's been done in the past. But this is obviously a year of particular prominence and importance. And so I, on behalf of the council, I really want to thank the task force and say that we'll be thinking of you constantly as we go forward with our policy decisions this year. We've obviously added a lot of new material to our business plan. We're going to be executing on that business material and we'll be seeking the task force's guidance every step of the way. So I can't stress enough how much you're appreciated and how nice it is to get to hear from all of you tonight. Any other council members want to add to that or? Okay. So I think with that, I want to give a big shout out for a great meeting. Thank you. Stress again how much Ruth Perez would have liked to be here. I know this committee is also very, very important to her. And thank you and good night and look forward to seeing you again soon in the future.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.